We have some meeting minutes to approve before we get on with our ceremony. So, we will be looking for a motion from either Donnie or Mary to approve our December forty-seventh regular scheduled council meeting minutes.
I would like to approve them.
Motion on the floor by Mary and second by-
I will second those minutes.
Donnie, all those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. At this time, before we move along, um, I would like to say goodbye to a couple of very good council members that I've really had the pleasure of working with for the last several years. Um, Donnie, I've had the pleasure of working with for four years, a very dedicated, good council member. Um, you're gonna be missed by the city and the city council. Um, Mary, uh, Mary, that kind of a unique situation. She stepped in to fill a vacancy and, um, performed her duties as clerk for the city in outstanding, outstanding fashion. She also stepped in right at the time we were working on elections and she handled that brilliantly.
She had a little experience before.
She did, yes, she did. So, at this time, I wanna say thank you to both individuals for your service to the city and our community and the city council. Um, you're gonna be missed, so, thank you very much. Mary, we came up with a certificate of appreciation for you helping to, uh, fill that role and, um, frame it. You can put this one on your door along with your, uh, your sign there.
Thank you.
Donnie, we've come up with a plaque for you for your four years of service to the city and, uh, thank you and your best wishes in the future.
Thank you.
Successful. Thanks, Donnie.
Thank you, Stephen.
Thank you. Keep up the good work.
I'll go that way and get your mic.
We'll be around.
Yeah, you're still gonna be on the board or two.
Be bad.
Alright, who wants to keep him in his place? Rush right there. That's what I figured they probably-
Let you guys know, take the ring. Good luck.
I'm thrilled. It's fun having people on board, so, yeah.
I'm coming over.
They're going up there and they're giving-
I don't have a way to my chairs.
Look at that, musical chairs, Mike wants the corner where it was.
He got tired of moving for me.
He did.
Now, I have to move for you wherever you want.
Uh, you guys. Um, with that said, I would like to introduce everybody who doesn't know these two individuals or council members. We have our new city clerk, three figures, council member Kyle Bassett. These are two very bright individuals who are gonna do an outstanding job for the city. Without a doubt, uh, for the, uh, these guys are, are gonna be huge assets. Welcome aboard, you guys, and, um, yeah, hang on.
I made the motion, we swear in the new, the new council members and mayor.
There is a motion on the floor to swear in three individuals, mayor, council member, and city clerk. Can we get a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mike, all those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed, carried unanimously, official oath of office. Nicole? What everybody wants to say.
Well, we don't have, they just have.
Alright, so, why don't you please raise your right hand, say, aye, Toby Egan.
Aye, Toby Egan.
Do solemnly swear or affirm-
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States-
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And that I will dis- discharge faithfully the duties of the Office of Mayor.
And that I will discharge faithfully the duties in the Office of Mayor of the City of Pierce.
The State of Minnesota.
The State of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Thank you. David Fisher, please raise your right hand. Aye, David Fisher.
Aye, David Fisher.
Do solemnly swear or affirm-
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And that I will discharge faithfully the duties-
And I will discharge faithfully the duties-
Of the Office of City Clerk in the City of Pierce.
Of the Office of City Clerk in the City of Pierce.
The State of Minnesota.
The State of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Thank you. Kowbenar, please raise your right hand. Aye, Kowbenar.
Aye, Kowbenar.
Do solemnly swear or affirm-
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And that I will discharge faithfully the duties of the Office of Councilmember.
And that I will discharge faithfully the duties of the Office of Councilmember.
In the City of Pierce.
In the City of Pierce.
The State of Minnesota.
The State of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
I'm aboard. Did you get a copy of the agenda?
I dropped the line, sorry.
Uh, we need to approve the rest of the agenda for the evening. Um, if there isn't any additions or corrections to our agenda, we will need a motion to have that approved.
There are a few additions to, uh, the agenda and deletions. Um, we have tabled the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, and two thousand nineteen City Lights contract agreement. Bob would like to go over it a little bit further, so, we're gonna table that till the next meeting. Um, we've added employee raises. Um, we've deleted the police report for next meeting, 'cause Eric could not be here today. Um, and I'd also suggest moving the exempt permit to the top of the agenda. And that's the, um-
Is that the first one?
Yep. Yes, thank you.
I make the motion that we approve the agenda with the corrections or changes that Nicole has made.
A motion on the floor from Stephanie, can we get a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mike, all those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. So, the first item we have on our agenda then would be the exempt permit, and that is the gambling permit for, uh, Church Ray.
Yep.
Saint Joseph's.
Is that with Dan and Sherif?
Yes.
Anybody have any issues?
Yeah.
This is with the raffle, excuse me, I'm not that thorough.
Dan will shatter his ear about it.
Okay, Dan will shatter it.
Mr. Raffle down.
What's that?
Mr. Raffle. Uh, we spent about three hundred and fifty-three thousand this last summer to redo the roof of the church and, uh, found out that was really just the tip of the iceberg. There's a lot of other re- repairs that need to be made. Um, the raffle that we are gonna, you know, we want to, uh, conduct this spring is a one thousand ticket raffle, a hundred dollars a ticket. We'll give away thirty thousand of that and hopefully raise close to seventy to, uh, continue with the re- repairs and maintenance on the church and the church grounds.
Very good. Can we get a motion to, um, issue the exempt per- permit for the, uh, church?
I make that, I make that motion that we go ahead and approve that, uh, permit for the raffle for Saint Joseph's Church.
Motion on the floor by Stephanie.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Dave, all those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously.
Would you like that signed right now?
If you can, if you want, I can sign that later, but I don't know, uh, you date it or turn that one.
I'd sign it as yours. Thank you.
Good luck, Dan.
Yeah, thank you.
We have next on the agenda to approve the record.
Thanks, Nicole.
Records are official, uh, paper, city's official paper, so, um, we have a section in there that, uh, the new section up in there, I should say, to post all our legal, um, lines, postings, things of that nature, so, we have to officially, you know, approve that. Um, you guys have a chance to take a look at that. Uh, it is eighty-seven cents per line and seven dollars thirty cents per column inch, which is pretty much, I think, we'll have, we'll need a motion to have that approved.
Make that motion.
Motion on the floor from Mike.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Kyle, all those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. Next item we have is our two thousand seventeen annual designation and appointments. You guys have a chance to take a look at those. If there isn't any issues, I will need a motion to have the annual designations and appointments approved.
I make the motion that we go ahead and approve those appointments. Yeah, you see, you've got a couple of new, you have new park board people, is that-
Yep, yep, a couple of new park board members, uh, being Don Bajelski and Todd Premesberger to fill a couple vacancies that we've had.
There is everybody pretty much, other than Shuffley, I'll get it, maybe pretty much same thing, the appointments and things, so, yeah.
Can we make a motion?
I did, I made a motion.
I'll second that.
Motion on the floor by Stephanie, seconded by Mike, all those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. So, are you guys, my computer just took a, took a dive.
Yay.
We miss us, we go. Um, we have our two thousand seventeen annual City of Pierce, that's our fee schedule. Um, there was a couple of small increases, I believe, with solid waste.
Recycling went down ten cents.
Right, recycling down, and what else did we have on our stuff?
Recycling went up ten cents.
Went up ten cents, I'm sorry, um, I went backwards. No, no, I know, I said it backwards, anyway, man. Um-
Mileage, the mess is by what the state has.
Right, and that one up two cents per DM rates.
Yeah. I don't think anything else is real different, just recycling, what I understand.
Um, we had some plow operator, um, that was an increase if the city has to come out and operate, uh, uh, plows for private use. Um, that went, I believe, from ninety-five to one hundred.
I talked with, um, all the department heads and there wasn't really any changes and everything's pretty much the same except for those three.
If there isn't any other questions, we will need a motion to have the annual fee schedule approved.
I'll make that motion to approve the annual City of Pierce fee schedule.
A motion on the floor by Mike.
I'll second.
Seconded by Stephanie, all those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. Uh, next we have our local Board of Appeals and Equalization, um, scheduled for Wednesday, May third. Uh, we are scheduled here at the county at one P M. Um, Nicole, there's, uh, some training that's being offered for council members who haven't had that. I know mine is expired, so, I'll have to take that.
Your mine?
Nope, yours is good until, um, yours, Steph's, and Linda's are good until two thousand eighteen, so, I just sent an email to all three of you to take the training and it needs to be done by February first.
And that's, you guys don't have to take the training. Um, there really only needs to be one individual who is trained for that board meeting, but-
We never know who's gonna show up to that meeting.
You know, if we have an emergency, somebody can't make it who is scheduled with the, we have to have somebody here, so, if you guys wanna come, they're fairly short. We're the last ones to help over at the courthouse.
Did they send any, uh, uh, schedule yet when they're having the meetings?
I haven't received that, no, I just received a letter of-
But I'm okay. Well, good. I thought I'd update it. Alright.
Well, being it's on a Wednesday, I know I won't be here, so.
We just need to leave one person to attend it.
That's-
That's, yep.
Well, just kind of an FYI.
Good idea for you guys to get rid of, or take it.
Oh, I got to take it, 'cause I always shove it on the new guy, huh?
We're getting it over here.
See, it's gonna go downhill over this way, they-
There's reason he sat over by me.
I'm gonna write minutes, you have that figured out. Uh, Nicole, you wanna kinda talk about our, uh, audit update?
Yeah, it's just, um, approving the audit services with, uh, Schlener and, and Schlener and Winder and Co. Um, yeah, so, it's just approving that we're gonna use them as our services for the year.
And we got the audit dates set up already.
Yep, it's February seventh and February eighth, so, we're working in the process of getting that all, everything prepared for that and-
Okay.
We seem we're on track.
Yeah, it'll be, uh, it'll be interesting for you to go through that for the first time with those folks, so, it's, uh, they, they are, seem to be really good people also. Um, I know all of our administrators who went through it in the past and nobody seemed to have trouble, so.
Like this green news.
Yep, yeah, they're pretty good at work.
Yeah, I'll just, um, need approval for the engagement letter and use that as a-
We will need that approval.
Make the motion that we, uh, approve the, uh, arrangement letter and the audit with Schlener, Winder.
February seventh and eighth, there's a motion on the floor by Mike.
I'll second.
Seconded by Kyle, all those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. Complain discussion, um, we are going to have a public hearing, uh, that would be on the twenty-third of this month. Uh, what time did we wanna do that, Nicole? We wanna talk about some changes that were made to the town plan.
It's set at six.
Six o'clock.
Could be short and it could be lengthy.
Yeah.
I've, um, heard from some people that they might be showing up and I believe they're in support of it, so, we do have two copies here at City Hall for review, one copy at the public library, and, um, it's also on our website, if anybody wants to review it prior.
Awesome, thanks, Nicole. Employee raises.
I believe-
Employees were given the raises back to the city.
Um, it was brought up and, um, there was some discussion held, and if I remember when I first started, there was a discussion of fifty cents across the board.
Yep.
And I think it was discussed at a workshop, and I couldn't find anything in the past minutes, and I discussed it with-
You know, it would have to be approved here, that's what we had basically in the budget for, uh, set aside for this year.
But it didn't, it didn't never-
Well, we didn't-
No, no, it hasn't been approved yet, and that's a good thing, because we could've approved it last month for the first meeting of this month, so, good.
So, it's fifty cents across the board for employees?
Yep, yep.
So, are you wanting a motion?
I am wanting a motion.
I make a motion to give the employees the raise of fifty cents across the board for the employees as we had discussed at a previous workshop and placed in budget.
There is a motion on the floor by Stephanie, can we get a second?
I second that.
Seconded by Mike, all those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed.
I should've asked this, I should've asked this during discussion phase, but I forgot after my break. You, I get a break for another couple days here. Anyway, um, is it retroactive to the first of the year?
First of the year, that happens the first of the year.
Okay, do I need to make a motion for that?
Uh, we should make a motion for that. Any other things we're gonna have to add to the motion is this would not cover Nicole. Nicole has her annual review, review next month, and it looks like she's probably, her six-month review, so, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Um, so, yes, she'll be looking at her raise at that.
So, I make a new motion now, okay? I'll make an additional motion that this raise for our employees is retroactive to January first of two thousand seventeen, and that our city administrator's raise is not part of this. She will be having her six-month review and her raise will be made accordingly.
Exactly, Stephanie. There is a motion on the floor by Stephanie, can we get a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Dave, all those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously.
You got a second, so, I'm gonna make them, because you signed the check, too.
You're doing pretty good for having an anesthesia hangover.
Drugs, I'm still on drugs, so, that, I miss a few things, we're good.
I know that first week is bummer. Um, and we wanted to table the City Lights thing, right?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, what do we have on our FEMA meeting?
Ms. Skip Fessler. Yes, Lance. Fessler, Land Survey.
Oh, I'm sorry, Fessler. I got some much for one on my paper here.
That's okay.
I can't think of the other.
We asked at the last meeting that, that Mike and you bailed on us, you know, chickens. Anyway, at, at the last meeting, we asked Nicole to contact, uh, the Fessler Surveying Company to go ahead, and it was part of a purchase agreement we set up for the Victor Heemans property. Don and I had, and actually, the whole council asked, um, that you go ahead and get a quote from him, because part of our purchase agreement is that we would get the survey if it hadn't been officially surveyed, and that the cost of that survey would be split fifty-fifty between the Heemans family and then the City of Pierce, so, Nicole went ahead and got this, this, uh, quote from them. For two thousand seven hundred sixty-four dollars, that'll give us a certificate of survey, uh, the location of the boundary corners, the river, and they'll put iron pipes in all the partners, is that right?
Yep.
Um, and they would start the work on the sixteenth, which is next Monday, and go through the, take them through the first week of February. So, um, I make a motion that we go ahead and approve that quote and get him started, so that we can then continue on with this purchase agreement, 'cause we can't go any further till we know the boundaries.
Just, uh, some clarifications, so, looking at the right thing here, stuff, like I said, my computer is, uh, having a coronary right now. But that's twenty-seven sixty-four, um, boundary corners, you know, twenty-seven hundred and sixty-four dollars, the boundary corners, yeah.
And that, that should take care of giving us, because right now, the sense is sixty point something acres, give or take a little, is always the sentence that we've gotten from them, so, we wanna know if it's give or take a little, so, we need to have, before we can have an official, before we can officially purchase the land, we need to know the definite boundaries, and I guess before we go any further with setting up closing or anything, we felt it would be prudent to get the actual boundaries of what we were buying before we went on from there.
We will need a motion to approve, or I'm sorry, Stephanie made that motion, to approve the quote of twenty-seven sixty-four from Fessler Survey. We will need a second.
I'll second that.
Motion on the floor by Steph and seconded by Mike, all those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously.
I also wanted to add a little bit to that. I sent, I talked to Larson Abstract O'Fallas for the title work. We did receive the title for it. I sent, uh, the title work to the attorney, he's kinda reviewing it, just to make sure everything's in order.
Okay.
Um, he will get back to us, he said hopefully on Wednesday. Um, and I also wanted to maybe ask if you guys wanted to set up a public plan for the public, just any comments and let them know what we're doing, or?
I guess it, it doesn't, I don't know, it doesn't matter to me. I know that we, we had talked about it at the last meeting and, and didn't get it done, and I know you had mentioned to me. I, as far as the public hearing, I said, I'm okay either way, but when Jason was here from David Drown, we talked about kind of ways we would think about funding, funding this. Also, talked about that we do have that park CD with the profits and that kinda thing, but I would like to sit down with the park board at-
Sure.
A workshop type meeting and with Daniel and everybody and kinda talk about how we got to this point. I would like Donnie, since he's still technically a city employee, since he's over on planning and zoning, you know?
And the park board.
And the park board now, um, you know, sit down, it's how we ended up, where we were at with what we spent, and, you know, I, I think that, and to kinda talk about, you know, and I know the finance committee has to make the final decision, but talk about how we're gonna pay for this. Um, like I say, Jason had, had talked a little bit about it at the last meeting, too, um, but we'd like to do a park board meeting with them when it can work out, and then, if the, if, if you only need a public meeting, we certainly can do it. I guess I don't know if we do or don't, but I'm, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I think the way it's, the way it's set right now is we have a finance committee meeting Tuesday, and what we're gonna do is come up with an option for the council, um, on the best places to use the money from. Um, I've been very adamant about our park complex, and I know that several of the council members have too, that, um, we don't wanna see any tax dollars invested into our park complex, our electrical fund, our money-making enterprises. So, um, the money that we use to purchase this property will be strictly enterprise money. We will not be using any tax dollars in it. It's an all-avoidable and just looking at the form of our numbers, we absolutely don't need that. We won't have to use any tax dollars in this process, so, um, by the admin committee, we'll meet on Tuesday. If you guys wanna schedule a meeting, Steph, or later in the week, uh, we can certainly do that, and then sit down with, uh, you can sit down and explain the land deal, and then what we'll do is a finance committee to sit down and we'll talk about how we're gonna plan on, uh, where we're taking the money from and pay for it, so.
So, yeah, and I think it'd be nice to do it, like I say, ta- with the park board too, in case they have any questions, I, you know, they are consulting on, on the parks complex, and Daniel is gonna be an integral part of how we do things, you know, I mean, it's, so, whatever works for.
So, you guys wanna try and plan something for later next week, after Tuesday, if we do, we'll wanna get that posted. Uh, well, we have to post for a minimum of two weeks, so, um, we wouldn't be able to do it quite for the public.
And we can wait till next meeting, too, till we figure out more. I just kinda wanted to get it out there and let people know that.
We should get all our ducks in a row.
We should have better ideas of what we're gonna be doing.
Okay. You know, before we go to the public with, that we know where we're going and, and one of the other questions is, you know, that I've heard on the street is, what is the city planning to do with it, you know? Well, there was a plan between the park board and the council, we just haven't publicized those things, and it's not a formal plan, but I think we need to relay to the general public what the vision is down there and, I mean, fill everybody in, you know, that, oh, that's, that we aren't just, you know, there, there is a plan, there's different ideas, and we need to solidify what we're gonna do.
So, so on that, I guess I'd like the council and park board to meet before we have a public meeting.
Oh, yeah, I agree. Yeah, but if we're gonna get together as a council, we're gonna have to post for a public meeting, so, that's kinda where I was going with this.
Right.
So, that's a two-week rate, not a three?
Uh, ten days.
Ten days, not a ten days.
So, yeah, put it as a workshop meeting with the council and work board.
Park board.
Sure.
Or whatever, whatever date works, I'm kinda free, maybe. Just make sure Mike isn't smoking in front of-
No, I can't guarantee that.
And then we could certainly do a public hearing after the fact, but, yeah, we're gonna have to get together as a group to try and, uh, talk about this stuff and make sure that it's gonna be okay with the city council and where we take the funds from, how we're gonna do that, so, um, we'll go from there. Sounds good.
Thank you. Thanks for all your work on, on all that other stuff, Nicole. I kinda just said, here, I did, I did this, fix it. Oh, she's a good girl.
Nicole, what do you have on the FEMA stuff?
Um, I just, it's, um, uh, training or median, I should say, about some flood studies and flood insurance study, and, um, the county's just offering it to us, and I just needed an RSVP if any of you guys were interested in attending. It was like, uh, Wednesday, yeah, January, January eleventh.
I will actually be done in St. Paul for the next three days, I'm not gonna be back until Thursday night, so unfortunately, I won't be able to make it, though somebody else wants to go by here.
I won't be around either. Paige, Kyle, Steph.
What kind of news at Wednesday?
It's at one-thirty to three P M.
At the courthouse.
Mm-hmm, in meeting room one.
Nicole, are you able to fill in if we can't get a council member to go as well?
I might be able to. I'd have to check my schedule, but, that hurts, it's on.
Kind of, it's on flood zones?
One-thirty to three P M.
In, in the city, oh, yeah, in, are they looking at what's in the city?
It's kind of an overview, it sounds like.
Looks like there's a new designated flood plain, things that FEMA has, so, I'm sure it looks, kinda looks like an insurance thing, um, as well, on whether maybe you should consider flood insurance or whether you can water it on, you know, so, it'd be kinda nice if we could kinda represent at all.
So, I will RSVP for one, and you can make a grade if you can't, you know?
We have some department reports, kinda going down the list here, Dan?
Does the council have any questions? I don't have anything, so...
Okay, other than we're shut down and it's cold down there.
And I'm out the bob every time.
Bob was normal. Nicole?
I'm just working on the yearly things at the end of the year, the beginning of the year, all that fun stuff, making sure we have everything ready for our audit, still working on learning all of the programs and making sure I know where everything's at, so that takes a little bit, sometimes I feel like, like it takes me a little bit longer than it should, but moving on.
Yeah, that's the thing about you, not only are you learning a new program, you're learning what needs to be done from the city exam, so it's kind of a, yeah, it's kind of a double whammy for you, so...
You're still at the point where everything is a first time.
Yeah.
It's a first time and one time, same deal, now, I also wanted to mention that Bob and Dan, Zach, they've been working a lot with the snow removal and they're doing wonderful jobs, so...
I would agree.
Every time there's a little bit of dust in, I feel like the sidewalks are already all shoveled before I can even think about it, so that's nice.
Yeah, a good dedicated group of, group of people who have, that's in, not only our but, but everybody in the city.
I should say Fred too.
Fred as well, yeah, yeah, don't forget about Fred. With that said, Nicole, I just want you to know, I've kinda been watching you progress over these last six months and walking into a, you know, what you had to walk into here with some of our bugs we had from switching to a new system and everything and to where you are now, you're doing outstanding jobs with a perfectly workforce. We have our treasures report.
The checkbook, the checkbook balance with the statement is at one million sixty-eight thou- hundred sixty-eight thousand seven hundred seventy-nine dollars and ninety-two cents. And that's a big balance because we got in our L G A money industry.
Neil, is there any CDs or anything like that as a break now?
We, I think, one that's not in a five-year rate now, but otherwise it's gonna be...
Okay, we will need a motion to accept the treasures report.
I make that motion.
Motion on the floor from Stephanie.
I'll second it.
Second by Dave, all those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. We have some bills to pay.
Do you guys, do you have the rest of it ranked out at all or don't? Cause like, they don't have a computer with it on?
Oh, yeah, they have.
Oh, they have, okay, okay, I didn't know they had it, sorry.
I will be needing signature, new signatures as well, from Linda Toby and Dave too for the table.
Yeah, I wanted to wait until the new council was sworn in, we actually have to, I have to set some thing up, things up, have to bank as part of signatory authority on some of our accounts, I'll do that on Friday when I get back and then you guys will have to make your way to the bank and sign some pen and scissors.
Does Kyle or is it just Linda and David?
Linda and David and myself and Nicole.
They don't trust us, Kyle, with the money.
They don't show us the money.
I trust them wholeheartedly, unfortunately. That's what the state wants of. We have some bills to pay. If there isn't any question, we will need a motion to have the bills paid for the month.
I make a motion to pay, is that the final, two-hundred forty-nine thousand? Seven thirty-six oh one, is that the bills for the month?
I believe so, yep.
If I make that motion to pay the bills, totaling two, two-hundred forty-nine thousand seven hundred thirty-six dollars and one cent.
It was, um, we paid a tip off, it was fifty-three thousand...
That, that, you guys did in that last...
Yeah, we did.
Okay, I got you. There is a motion on the floor to pay the bills, Mike, can we get a second?
I'll second.
Second by Kyle, all those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
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 Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. Anybody else have anything before we adjourn?
Yeah, I do. Well, I'm just going back to the bills here on the RipSaw, we did have some conversation, the park board did, with RipSaw, with I think Herb, when we were doing an audit, you know, we're getting billed down there at the campground and our, out of the clubhouse with Hawaii going to the shelters and I know that RipSaw had a directed bubble, Bob Gruber, to monitor those, I don't know, David, you guys got a meeting this week?
I don't know.
If you can check on that, I know we're, they were gonna look at adjusting something and I don't remember, I know Neil's very intricate in that conversation with Herb and Daniel, you might know more to it.
You want to build the minimum for the shelter and the clubhouse?
Yeah.
And it's the same way it coming in and it winds up, so...
Basically, when you look at shelters, what we rent out or what we receive on income, we're losing money on the shelters all the time because the water bill is more than what we ever, and there, and I don't believe, and that's what they were gonna monitor was the usage over there.
Yeah, because if I, memory serves me right, instead of one beer coming into the complex, there's two where it splits off and so it's the extra service charge that we get to bill for.
Right, so I don't know what that was, but I think, you know, it's the beginning of the year and I know they were gonna monitor it all summer to do that, but if you wanna check into that, Dave, a little bit?
We've had the conversations there about it.
Yeah.
And I believe we were monitoring it to see...
Where, what's your... All right, that's all I had. It'll be kinda nice, now, we might get some feed, more feedback with Dave sitting on both boards, I think that's a plus for the city.
Absolutely.
That we get a little more information here and, and I've always said, over the years, when RipSaw first started, we did have council representation and the meetings are always on a Wednesday night and I would've opted to go on that board, but I'm all gone on Wednesday nights, so I think it'll be a plus to have Dave here and there, so...
I will definitely, we will definitely utilize Dave.
Just roll something.
Watch out, Dave.
I get it, I feel it.
Not even an hour here, Dave. All right, very good, everybody, I will need a motion.
I make a motion during the meeting.
There is a motion on the floor from Stephanie to adjourn.
Get a second.
I'll second.
Second by Mike.
Second by Mike, Dave. Second by Dave, stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. Thank you very much.
That's a good way to start the year.